All right. It is Tuesday, August 8th, 6:30 PM, which means Council Services and Safety Committee, we have two items before us this evening. The first is Agenda Bill 7451, Teen Cafe Letter of Interest. And I'm going to have Emily Moon introduce our conversation here this evening.
Great, thank you very much. We have some guests with us tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to them very shortly. I will just say that you can tell from the Agenda Bill and the background materials attached to it that the idea of a teen hangout place has been subject of conversation in the community for quite some time. And I'm happy to report that over the last year or so, some significant progress has been made in figuring out what that business plan might look like for the operation of the center, what sort of collaboration might occur between the city and the group that's been exploring this opportunity. And first and foremost, I guess they've also determined that there's a spot, that's a suitable location, and that's one of the primary reasons why it's before a council subcommittee, because it is a city-owned property. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kaylee Jake, and she's the Development Director of the Issaquah Schools Foundation.
Right, that's my day job. And then on the side, I've been working on this. So first, I just want to thank you so much. The fact that I'm sitting in front of you tonight is thrilling, that we've gotten to this point. It just reflects not only the work of our planning committee over the last two years, but a lot of the people that you're seeing in the audience today have been along us from the beginning. So I'm really proud of the work that we've done. So today, I want to give you an overview of what we're planning, of what our vision is for the teen center, or the teen cafe, and then hear it from some more folks that are more interesting than I am, probably. So over the past two years, we've been working on this idea to bring a teen center to Issaquah. Our mission is to provide a safe place for teens, where they can just hang out, but also have access to programming and services. We want to be a community factor, sorry, community protective factor. We believe that it takes all of us working together to ensure that our students have the support that they need. And we envision a place where students are not only valued for their differences, but cherished for the unique history, beliefs, traditions, and perspective that they bring. In our first year, we spent a lot of time just gathering information. And it's always been important to us to have teens at the table, and we have, from the very first meeting. And so one of the first things we decided to do is to go talk to the experts in our community. So we went to the Firehouse in Redmond, we went to the Boiler Room in Port Townsend, K-Tub in Kirkland, and of course, the EX3 that's up in Smamish. We wanted to learn from them, you know, what the best practices were, and what should we be incorporating into our plan. And then the other thing that we wanted to do, and they have been invaluable to us, the other thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that this was a, that we weren't duplicating efforts already in our community. So we connected with Issaquah Parks and Rec, and again, with EX3 up in Smamish. And, you know, the community has said, yes, we need you. This is, this is a gap in the services that we're providing. And then another part of our information gathering is the two surveys that we put out to our teens across the district. And we wanted to make sure that what we were creating was going to be value, a value to them, and that it wasn't just, what I like to say, a bunch of old people telling the young people what they should be doing, but actually that it was something that they, they really wanted. And then, and then we can always look at our Healthy Youth Survey data. And what we learned from that, and this is just one slide that I pulled from the 2016 data, is that our high school students are incredibly stressed out. They are under so much pressure to succeed. And when we talk at the table, we really want to be a catalyst for the change in that attitude that your self-worth is connected to your SAT scores. We want to be a place where they can get away from that and, and really discover who they are. So this slide is just talking about the anxiety levels in our students. And I think what's important when we look at this is to notice that our eighth graders are scoring seven points above the state average in, in their anxiousness. And our 12th graders are 10 points higher than they were in 2014, when we measured this. So I think as a community, we have some work to do around this area. And if you aren't familiar with the survey data, it's fascinating, and the Issaquah School District has it posted. So from all this information that we gathered, we landed on a few principles for the teen cafe. And first and foremost, there will be no cost to come in. Often, there's a fee, even at the Community Center or the Boys and Girls Club. Here, there, anybody is welcome, as long as you're high school-aged. And then it's also really important to us that there are services provided. And early on, we, we had conversations with Friends of Youth in providing some kind of counseling services. So we're still talking about that, how that would work. It's also really important that our teens are responsible for anything that's programmed in that space. So again, going back to we're not telling them what to do, that they're really choosing what they want to do. And then our hook, because you have to have a hook, is that we'll, we'll be serving coffee and, and snacks. So we partnered with the Issaquah Coffee Company very happily in talking about how to make that happen there. All right. And so, so I wanted to share with you our advisory board. We put together an advisory board, and unfortunately, they're all on vacation today, which is why you're stuck just with me. But it includes myself, Jerry Blackburn, who's the Program Manager of Substance Abuse and Prevention Services at Friends of Youth, Carolyn Kennedy, who's the Interim Healthy Youth Initiative Director at Issaquah Schools Foundation, and then the recently retired Barb D. Michelle. And then, again, we've always had students as a part of our group, but last winter, we realized that our plans had started to solidify, and we really wanted more of them at the table. So we, we chatted with the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board, Kathy Jones, and learned about their process for accepting applications and interviewing. And so we mirrored what they do. And, and now I'm very proud to have our nine members of our Teens for Teens Steering Committee, which you'll hear from a few today. And then I just wanted to show you some, just some of the community support that we have. We have others, but we're, I'm still in the process of making, I just want to verify that we can put them publicly. But from the beginning, we've just worked under this assumption that the more voices at the table, the better. And I really believe that we needed to cast a wide net to make sure that the people, that our community was supporting this effort, and that it wasn't just us driving this through. And so I'm, I, we have many of the folks here with us today. But Gina Palm is here, and she's the Director of Youth and Family Services here in Issaquah for Friends of Youth. And Ryan Heidi with the Issaquah Coffee Company is here with us tonight. And then we have Heidi Fuss with ParentWeiser, and Karen Crowe with Arena Sports. So we've really reached broadly into the community to make sure that all the different pieces of our community were reflected. And I want to say that it's especially wonderful to have Gina here tonight with Friends of Youth, because early on, one of the decisions we made is that we weren't going to go after our 501(c)(3) status in the beginning. We wanted to test the model. But in order to do that, we needed to find a fiscal sponsor, someone that could allow us to raise money, and also provide us with the insurance that we needed. And to open a teen center or teen cafe, you need to have some hefty insurance. And so we started talking with Friends of Youth, and I am thrilled to tell you that they have agreed to become our fiscal sponsor. And so we are super excited to partner with them in the community to serve our youth. So now I'd like to have you hear from some others. And one of the community members that have been with us from the beginning is Lisa Callen. Lisa serves on the Issaquah School Board, and she's just an amazing asset to this community. So Lisa.
Up here, right? Is the mic just good? Okay. So hi, I'm Lisa Callen, and I have been, I serve on the Issaquah School Board. But as soon as I got wind of this teen center effort, I'm like, let me, let me participate, let me see what's going on. And I guess Kaylee did a fabulous job of describing the need and the desire, not only on adults' parts, but on the, the part of students, right? And the Issaquah School District has ins the mission of where we want students to be, and two of those are on citizenship and personal awareness, right, and the strength around that. And that's exactly what all of this, this is about. So the school district certainly can work and has a world of effort in, in working with students to have their voices known and to be heard. You've seen from the Healthy Youth Survey data, there's a lot there. I've had an opportunity as a school board member to hear student voices several times in several different arenas, including most recently at the Healthy Youth Action Forum, where they talked about the Healthy Youth data and the survey around that. And even there, you hear, there's no place for teens to go just to be, right? There's no place for teens to go just to be. And, and that's an important message, an important voice that we need to hear. So I think that it's really important to know that through all of the work that's been done, and through all of the work that I do regionally, and even at the state level, seeing the strength of this team's leadership, both from an adult and from a student perspective, I'm amazed at the efforts that are going into all of this. The, the plan is well thought out, every little nook and cranny, everything there is, the questions are being asked, the research is being done, and I think the time to pilot is, is here and now, to try to find out where we are. So if you have strong leadership, you have, not only in adults, you saw the list, you all know these community members, they have strong Issaquah community values, as well as strong hearts and compassion for youth. So you have that adult leadership. You have the leadership and the voice of our citizen students that are here in front of us to drive this as well. And then you have the strength of the community partners. I mean, you've got the trifecta of what it's going to take to launch this, if you've got a strong plan on top of that. So the other thing that I've, I want to bring voice to and to show support, is that this is really Issaquah's, the city of Issaquah's chance to, to really has the opportunity to show their support of their youth citizens, right? And to bring that support and strengthen the city of Issaquah as a whole, by providing the services that aren't here at this point for this group. And I think that that's what a strong city takes. It takes strong schools, it takes strong community partners, it takes a strong municipality that recognizes the value of all of its citizens, regardless of their age, you know, before birth, all the way through, and then works with establishing our own community leadership and values, so that these students continue to work and grow, not only across our democracy, if I get, you know, you can tell I'm in, in the education, right? I like to go this motherhood and apple pie, but, but really even just right here in our hometown. That's what's really important, our neighbors, right, in creating that. And we have such a diverse and strong community, and I think that adding this is just going to make us that much stronger. So I just wanted to, I asked for a few minutes, not to belabor getting all of the really great voices you want to hear on the stage, but just wanted to make sure you knew that I fully support this. And the strength and of the, the plan and the strength of the leadership here, I, you can't go wrong with just asking for a pilot. There's, you just can't go wrong there. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay. That was pretty fabulous. So now I want you to hear from the most important people in the room today, which is our students. And I'm going to have them come up one at a time, but this is Logan Manning, Olivia Van Rye, Lisa Lee, sorry, and David Kim.
Hello. My name is Logan Manning. I'm currently 16 years old and a sophomore at Liberty High School. Right now, one of the biggest aspects of my life is music. I'm currently the drummer in a band, and my favorite part of being in a band is that it feels like a second family. This may be because everyone in the band is my best friend, and we have a unique connection, like an unspoken brotherhood. When we walk on stage, we all know we have each other's backs, no matter what happens, we're there for each other. This is the same feeling on and off the stage, and as a band, we strive to make music about unity, family, and acceptance. And these are all things that the teen cafe supports. I was drawn to apply for the Teens for Teens Cafe Student Board because of their promise of making a safe place for teens. A promise that teens will feel the presence of a second family, much like I do with my band. With a teen cafe, students who feel alone and divided from society will have a place where they can connect with other students. And for lots of students, they will find ways to engage others in face-to-face interactions. Far too many students spend too much time on social media and video games. They take away from our life skills with interacting with one another in real life. And a teen cafe would encourage students to come together in a place where we can study, hang out, make music and art, and enjoy some coffee and food together. A teen cafe would give students a place to feel connected to each other in ways schools and community centers can't offer. And a teen cafe would give students the same feeling my band has when we walk out on stage, a feeling of unity, family, and acceptance. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Olivia Van Rye. I'm 15 years old, and I go to Liberty High School. I just recently moved here a few months ago, all the way from New Hampshire. I can easily say that my life here has changed immensely, but it's changed for the better. I'm now at a better school, in a better neighborhood, and in a better community. I've grown very attached to the Issaquah community, because everyone's been so kind to me, and act, and very active in making it a welcoming environment. When I first found out about the Issaquah Teen Committee, I was so excited. I immediately wanted to apply, so that I could contribute my part to the community. And I also wanted to get involved with my friends and family more as well. I wanted to be able to give kids my age a place to express themselves and hang out with their friends. The teen cafe would mean so much to me. When I envision the Issaquah teen cafe, I think of a comfortable, stylish place, where I can walk in after school, grab a snack, and relax to do my homework. But I also want it to be unique and different from a place like the Community Center. I want it to be special for teenagers all across our community, where no parents or adults will bother them, and where they can connect and interact with each other. We would also hold special events for us all to take part in, and be open during very convenient hours. I've told many of my friends about the teen cafe, and they've already been so excited about it. If the teen cafe is finally created, it would be like a dream come true to me, and definitely the committee and teenage community. Thank you for your time, and thank you for helping us succeed in making our dream come true.
Thank you.
Oh God. Hi, my name is Lisa. I am a senior at Issaquah High School. And then, oh God. So first thing I realized, realized by applying to Teens for Teens was that there isn't really space for just teens. There are quite a few places for the whole community, but there isn't really a space just for us. So I thought it would be really nice to have a space for us, because sometimes you can't really focus at our home, because it's just comfortable, so you fall asleep, and that's not good. So yeah, I thought it would be really nice by having it. And then if we have a teen cafe in the future, hopefully soon, I feel like it will give so much opportunity and benefit so many students, because it will provide a safe place where you can just chill and relax and do what you want to do, which will help them and support them. Thank you.
Thank you. You had nothing to be nervous about, you did fine.
Today's youth face unprecedented challenges and struggles. From an abundance of daily homework to concerns of fitting in, being a teenager has never been harder. Hello, everyone. My name is David Kim, and I'm a rising junior at Skyline High School. Starting in the third grade, when my family moved to the Issaquah School District, I've definitely noticed how active our schools are in not only, not only providing excellent education, but also investing in social and emotional learning, supporting the well-being of students that thrive in our schools. Leading this cause is the Issaquah Schools Foundation's Healthy Youth Initiative. The Healthy Youth Initiative's mission is to create a positive culture for youth by connecting community resources that empower all to thrive. Under the Healthy Youth Initiative, I serve with Youth Opposed to Drug Abuse, which is a youth coalition dedicated to substance abuse prevention, and I also serve with BEST, a mental health awareness group that works to prevent youth suicide. By being involved with these two committees over the years, I've been in a position to see the needs of our community's youth. Students encounter many daily stressors and a continual pressure to succeed, which has translated to an increase in mental health issues. As Kaylee mentioned before, according to the 2016 Healthy Youth Survey, 60% of Issaquah School District's eighth graders experienced anxious feelings in the past two weeks at the time of taking the survey. Evidently, there is a serious problem regarding our community's youth, and in order to address this problem, we all need to recognize the importance of simply doing nothing. In our fast-paced lives, taking a few minutes to take a walk or just hang out with friends allows for us to incubate and synthesize our thoughts, which in turn only has the benefits of increasing productivity and overall reducing stress, which is exactly why a place like the teen cafe is so necessary in our community. Providing a space where students can simply hang out and unwind is so imperative in addressing the well-being of our students. With structured and unstructured activities, a teen cafe will be a place where students can gather with friends while taking a mental break, allowing students to cope with life stresses in a positive and healthy way. Although it is undeniable that being a teenager today is definitely hard, there is hope to overcoming this challenge. Thank you for all of your support and your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
No, I want to clap, too. So that's what inspires me every day, to do this work. So you've seen that we have a mission, we have a vision, we've got amazing student leadership and phenomenal partners in our community, and now we have fiscal sponsorship. So the last thing we need to make this a reality is a facility. A house on Second and Bush would be a wonderful place for us to start. It's centrally located, it's within walking distance of two high schools, it's on a bus route. We back up against the Community Center, which allows us a venue for bigger, you know, events, if, if Logan's band wanted to play, perhaps. And we also know that we need to start small. We know it's going to take time for us to build trust, trust with the students, trust with the parents. And so this, this house would allow us that opportunity to build the trust in our community, to test the model. And we're hoping that, you know, when, once we start to see an increase in the youth attending month by month to month, growing community support, an increase in our community partners, and an increase in funding, then we'd start planning for sustainability. And I see that taking, you know, probably about two years. That's my guess. And then once we find some firm footing and, and really know what this needs to be and the best way to do it, then I think we'll be ready to look for a more permanent location and decide, will we become our own nonprofit or find a permanent partner? But I, I just feel, I can't say how grateful I feel to Friends of Youth to, to allow this, us this opportunity. And then, you know, the, the city has been so wonderful and supportive as we've kind of broached this idea. And so the fact that you're considering this house for us would be incredible. It, it would be amazing. And I kind of want to echo what Lisa said. You know, I think of our community as a three-legged stool. We have the Community Center, we have our Senior Center, and a teen center would just even that stool out, so it's not wobbly. So, so, you know, I, I think about the outcomes, I think about what we ultimately want to do for our kids, and, and you've heard all of these, but the ultimate outcome to me would be this vibrant community, where members of every generation, from toddlers to senior citizens, feel welcomed, engaged, and valued. I just want to thank you again for considering our request, and for all that you do in our community. I grew up in Issaquah, I moved back here to raise my family. I love the city. I love the fact that we care about each other and that we want to do better. And, and I think that together, we can do better for our teams, make something really amazing. Thank you.
So, so now I think we can open up to some questions, before we do any deliberation on it. I have a couple.
Yeah.
So you, there, in the bill here, we have, there's a funding model that talks about narrative and operating costs. Am I hearing you right, that you have secured funding, you have secured donors for that funding for some amount of time? Or where, where are you at on, because you're not asking the city-
We are not.
-to cover any of that.
We are not, that's correct.
You're asking the city to provide one of the buildings that we own for some amount of time?
Correct, correct. And so we have not been able to raise funds as of yet because of, because we were negotiating the fiscal sponsorship. And, and I would anticipate that, that all of the contract is done by the end of this month, and then that would allow us to, the ability to raise money.
So what does the, if you have a fiscal, I'm confused between fiscal sponsorship and fundraising. What's the, if you have a, oh, the fiscal sponsorship, in terms of the covering of insurance-
Correct.
-and the, yes, the umbrella-
And it allows-
Yes, organizational umbrella.
Right. So I can't apply for grants or-
Right.
-right, donations, until we have that, yeah.
Sorry, now I understand. So that's going through right now.
Correct.
You want to start with a building, and then you're going to get to work on raising, raising the funds for the program.
Correct.
I see, okay.
Yes.
And how much, how much funding do you think you're going to want to try to have in place before you actually kick things off?
So right now, we have an architect who is donating his time, so if we get to that point. And we also are, have conversations with a contractor. In talking about the architect, in talking with our architect, in looking at the space, I think the remodel, that could be, you know, $60,000 to $80,000. You know, our intention isn't to change the house, I don't want to remodel the house, I just want to make sure that we bring it up to code. And really, the, the bulk of that is making the bathrooms accommodating to city code. So, so we've talked about the permitting press, that's kind of his guess. You know, a lot of this, and a lot of the plan, a lot of the budget, it's our best guess at this point. Until we have a location, then we, then we'll know, like, you probably read in the narrative, budget narrative, you know, we anticipate perhaps three to five part-time people, but depending on how many students can be in the facility, that may go up, may go down. So these were just kind of our best guesses. Once we've secured a facility, we'll be able to create something that's much more solid.
Got it.
Okay.
I do. So you just spoke about personnel-
Yeah.
-on three to five. So are they going to have, what kind of requirements are you going to have of them? Are they going to have some special training in order to supervise these youth and help them through with some of the issues that may be arising?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things that I've learned from the experts, and, and I've worked a lot with Zach, who was the Executive Director at EX3 and, and has just taken a new position, but I know that, that the younger the staff is, the better. And I also know that they need to be trained and consistently trained as our world changes and there are emerging needs. And so he and I have been talking about his training cycle, and who he gets to come in and train his staff. The other thing that he and I have talked a lot about is that, you know, our hook of the cafe, I, I think that, I mean, I don't know how familiar you are with teenagers, but, you know, their stomach is usually a good way to get them to do things. And so I feel like that's our hook to get them in the door, but it's our staff who's going to keep them there, right? It's the staff who's going to engage with them and make sure that what we've created is something that they feel is of value to them. And so it's really important to me that, that the staff that we bring in would be young, have that training, you know, I'm anticipating just early college students, hopefully in social work, that kind of thing, that has some experience working with youth. And then, yeah.
And, and age, is this high school only?
Yes.
Is this middle school?
Nope, it's high school only.
This is high school only?
Yep.
And I heard that perhaps right now, this is going to be focused more on just Issaquah High School.
No, it's the district. And so our survey has gone across the district, and I-
My question is transportation.
Yes, please. Yes. So that's why it's really important that we're on a bus line, and we are. The 554 runs right here, which is a block away, or a block and a half, and then the-
But if we're looking at Liberty or-
Correct, correct.
Okay, the Plateau, that's a ways to come.
It is. And I've been talking with the new mayor in Smamish, Bob Keller, about transportation. If you live in Smamish, transportation is very difficult. If you live in Smamish, transportation is very difficult to get around, and even in Isakua, but especially if you're up on the plateau, and that is a concern of ours. I think, you know, at some point, eventually, they'll be able to drive them technically or supposedly, right? So, there's that part of it. When we spoke to the folks at the Firehouse in Redmond, we hear from them that students in Isakua are coming to their bigger events when they have bands play and things like that. I'm hopeful, and I think we reflected that in the, in our business plan, that, you know, even students from Snoqualmie would be welcome, you know, any student is welcome. Homeschooled students, private school students are welcome. You have to be in that college, or, sorry, college, high school age.
And I'm sure this will all develop as it gets going.
Yeah, thank you.
And they'll be finding ways in which to get down here. Counseling? So, you'll have counselors on site?
That is my hope, yeah. And ultimately, I would like somebody there every day, and I'm sure that's, you know, very unrealistic financially, but, but yes. And we've already started talking about how that would work and how it would, you know, I don't, I don't, I think you've probably gathered from my whole talk tonight, is that I don't want anything to be kind of shoved down their throat or right in their face. So, I want it to be more of a subtle thing, but I want them to know it's there. Unfortunately, Officer Ryan Smith was sick tonight, or he would be here, and, you know, he's not in your face, but he's part of our group, and he's such an important part of building that community for our youth. So, again, I mean, I wish I had more solid answers for you right now, but it's very important to me that they have access to that resource. So, whether they're signing up somewhere confidentially, and we're finding those times for them to either go down the street to Friends of Youth or perhaps have a room at the community center, we're still kind of working out those details, but they are committed to providing that resource with us.
So, and to follow on on that, so you've got a steering committee of youth that are going to be looking at the programs that are offered, and you've got your advisory board. Do you have, from Friends of Youth or from the school district or from the city, some sort of oversight group or a group that's going to have sort of a high-level, not there every single day or a touch every day, I understand how you're trying to work it, but a group that's going to be reviewing ongoing programs? And I'm thinking specifically around, you know, who makes sure that your staff are qualified per, you know, per your operating plan, those sorts of things.
Right. So, I think if you look at the kind of hierarchical structure of what I see, so we have the steering committee that's kind of in the space, and then you have our advisory, call it a board, it's not really a board, but the four of us that are keeping track of that, the staff and things of that nature. And then, we'll have, to your point, an oversight committee. In the contract with Friends of Youth, they are a part of the hiring process.
Okay.
They are taking, you know, I would be submitting budgets to them, expenses, right, every month. Everything financial will funnel through them. And then, I would imagine that in that same oversight, if we are, you know, if we have access to the house, then the city would also have that oversight, right? And just, because then you've got skin in the game, and we want to make sure that we're abiding by all the rules. I mean, that's kind of the beauty of this, is that we're modeling this awesome community thing, and I, so, you know, all our Ts will be crossed and our Is will be dotted, because that's what I want to model for our students.
Got it. And can I ask a question around, you've got, under community support, can you talk a little bit about what the, some of those organizations are providing in terms of, when you say community support, what's the, what are the role that these various groups are providing?
So, some of them can't be connected with their day job, or you'd have to go through a lot of red tape. But, you know, we've been speaking with, for instance, Paula Phelps, who's the executive director of high schools at the district, from the beginning, and Ron Thiele, our superintendent, is very much in support of this. Harlan Gallinger is another school board member, but if I put "school board" after their name, then I can get in trouble. So, I'm just stating them as citizens, but he's a physician, but he's also on the school board.
So, these are folks that endorse the concept, but is anybody providing, for instance, in-kind donations?
So, we, you know, so, we've had conversations with the Isakua Coffee Company in making that partnership affordable for a nonprofit. We've talked about the counseling and how that would work with Friends of Youth. But to be honest, until I had this fiscal sponsorship lined up and a building, because until we have a facility, you know, I don't know. But I've had conversations, for instance, with our faith-based community, and they're very interested, you know, one of the things that I would like us to provide are community dinners once a week. We can't cook on-site, or we'd have to completely overhaul the kitchen, it would take up all the space, and like, two kids would come. But we can, we can have food brought in, and they're very interested in providing that. They're also, I have Catherine Sedwick up there, who's the, I was going to, thank you, at St. Michael's, and she's amazing, and she said, you know, "Reach out to the faith-based community, and they'll help." You know, "Do you need art supplies? Do you need help getting some music set up?" Or, you know, "What do you need?" And they will, they will help you. And so, she's been wonderful, and I've talked to a few others in the community who have echoed her sentiments. So, again, you know, I just, I kind of wanted to get these big ducks lined up, because then I think I can make a really compelling ask.
Sure. And you should talk to Mother Catherine about the kitchen, because I believe it's licensed.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And it's really close.
But already USP.
Seriously. And some soda, right? And I also want to say, you know, because the idea of raising money is, it should be on your mind, it's definitely on my mind, but, you know, I've been working in the nonprofit field for over twenty years, and I've been raising money for a long time, and I'm really good at it. And I really believe in this, this effort, and so, and I really want my community to support this. And so, yeah, so I, that'll take care of it. So, I am very confident in it.
I have a question for Emily around this question about the oversight and whether, I mean, I don't know, I mean, in some senses, we're just, we would just be the landlord in this arrangement, right? So, we don't have any sort of regulatory, it's all, it's all Friends of Youth? I mean, tell me our engagement and oversight.
Sure. And I'll tell you, I've only been this much involved thus far, so I, I'm not sure I can accurately represent what conversations a city administrator may have had. But from my point of view, it would be largely as landlord from big capital-C city involvement. I think, as you've heard tonight, there's other departments that are involved in different ways, and we'll be collaborative partners, whether that's our police department or our Parks and Recreation Department or lots of others. I have many, many thoughts about ways that we can also assist. But from a regulatory oversight kind of standpoint, I think it's just in being a good steward of the property that's owned by the full community.
And I would guess in ensuring that our insurance is appropriate would probably be a concern of the city's, and that's something that we're...
I'm sure there would be lease, I mean, the lease would have terms in regards to that.
Sure. You know, one thing that was apparent in the agenda bill, there's still work that needs to be done to, as Kaylee mentioned, to make sure that the house is compliant, of course, for the use, since the use would be changing, and the agenda bill hints at the fact that that would involve some amount of outreach, notification, as that use changes, and, you know, permitting processes, and so, as my development services director would like me to point out, there's still those sorts of regulatory hoops to jump through, but that's not because of what this project is, it's just a fact of changing use in a building, so.
Right. And the city has been great in keeping us kind of informed in what that process would look like. Yeah, it's been wonderful.
Great. Question?
Yeah. So, thank you so much for all this...
There you go.
Thank you so much for all this great information, and I appreciated the very detailed budget. One question that I had about the budget, you have it down as first-year budget, it's really built out, which is great, including travel and training. Is it sort of representative of the kind of budget you would need within a year, or would you be just staffing up immediately and trying to raise that exact amount for the first year?
So, I think, I think this reflects more of a budget that is the first year that we're actually open and in business. So, I know that there is going to be costs around getting the house up to code, and so, you know, once we've, if we've secured the facility, and that's immediately what I would start raising money to do, and then, and then start working on raising money for that first year. So, my anticipation, you know, I'd love for us to be open in January, but more realistic probably is March-ish, and so, I would say that that budget would reflect that kind of March, you know, that once we've opened our doors and we've staffed up, yeah, I think that's, that's where we would be. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So, the money that would go toward any kind of remodel, you said, was just getting everything up to code. I'm assuming because it's a house, that it's compartmentalized, that kind of thing, so can you just sort of explain the vision of the cafe in a house?
Sure, sure.
A little bit more.
Yeah. So, luckily, the house is, it has a little bit of a loft, but that would not be usable space, because it needs to be ADA compliant, obviously. So, it would just be the main floor.
Okay.
And luckily, it's a pretty open floor plan, which is nice. And so, I think, at this point, there's a hallway that we could bump out the bathroom to accommodate, I think we need two bathrooms for it to be up to code, and so that eats up a little bit of the floor, floor space? Doesn't sound right when I say it, which is what we can base the occupancy number. And so, what we've talked to the architect about is, off the back of the house, there's quite a sizable yard, and right now, there's a deck with a bit of a cover, and we're hoping to increase the floor space by covering that and enclosing it, you know, almost like the tents you can get. And the idea would be that the barista cart would be outside, and that the rooms inside then would be for, you know, whether they're hanging out, there's room in the dining room, you know, I could see like a big table where students could work on their homework. In the, in the room off the front, you could have an art space with some easels and things like that, or it could be the quiet room, depending on what they tell me they need. So, so there's room to get away. It's not big, it's, you know, by any means. I think our architect predicted maybe thirty-five to forty students at a time. But to start, I think that's reasonable. I think, I mean, I would love it if we had more than that, that wanted to show up every day. That'd be a good problem to have. So, yeah, so that's kind of the vision that we have at this point. But it's an older home, and when our architect look, you know, the floor needs to be, you know, secured, and I think the wiring needs to be fixed. So, there's some, some things that we would need to do.
So, it sounds like you've been doing a lot of work in terms of best practices by talking to neighboring cities about what they've been experiencing. Could you give an example of what has gone really well, and then an example of some of their biggest challenges with this?
Sure.
The Teen Cafe?
Sure, yeah. So, I think one of the things that has gone really well that we will steal is connecting with the ASB clubs. So, the Firehouse does a really good job of that, and when I visited, I think the second time I visited, you know, I walked through the space, and they, you had cheerleaders making signs for the pep rally that was coming up, and then they were right next to a band that was practicing for their concert that was coming up, and all of those students are interacting. I was thinking, Eileen, your question about, you know, who are you going to hire? Another thing that I love that they do is they put pictures of the staff on the wall right when you walk in the door, because parents can't tell the staff from the students sometimes, which, you know, if you've seen some senior high school students, especially boys with full beards, it would be hard to tell, right? So, those are some, some good practices. I think having that connection with the schools and having them use your space. One of the challenges that Zach shared with me is making sure that the staff is the right staff, and that it's a really important hire, and he's really kind of ingrained that in me. And so, I know that our committee is going to need to do some work to, you know, my hope is that some of the, some of my colleagues in this field would join me in that hiring process to make sure that we're doing a good job, because that's where he's, he's found some challenges, is when you've brought somebody in that isn't, you know, they're overly trying to connect with the students, or they don't know how to connect with students, and they can be a wily bunch, so, so, you know, that, and especially in such a small space, you know, one or two people that just aren't connecting could really be a problem. So, something I'm looking for, yeah.
Parking?
Amazing parking.
Okay.
Amazing parking, because we butt right up against the community center, and when we've talked with the folks at Parks and Rec, they, you know, our hours of operation are a little bit different than their usual groups, and so, they, they don't think we're going to have any trouble, and they're happy for us to share that parking with them. I mean, there's, obviously, there's street parking a bit, and then, and then, our ADA entrance will be in the back, so there'll be, there'll be a parking space for a van or what have you, and then a ramp that will go up to the back of the house.
And then, some...
Throw in, I don't want to be negligent in not mentioning this, certainly, this is a change of use, it's, it's in a location where there's neighborhood and then there's community center. This neighborhood does, from time to time, of course, get spillover from community center use or other community events that take place in this vicinity. Having said that, even though they might be a little used to it, this is a new potential use in the neighborhood, and so, we will just need to be cognizant about that.
You bet.
And continue to try to be good neighbors to the residents that live in this neighborhood. So, I think you're wise to bring up that this will be an area for questions, and...
Sure.
I think there's opportunities to try to instill in the kids that will come to this facility, how to, where to park and how to be thoughtful neighbors.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And last question. So, will there be, will there be activities going on during the summer season?
Yes.
Or is this, okay.
That's my intention.
And then, I'm sure we're probably jumping ahead here, but hours of operation?
So, before the bell times changed, I had envisioned that, you know, perhaps we would have that early morning, you know, kids could swing by on their way to school kind of thing. It's later now, I don't know if that's, you know, in my mind, I was thinking that more of a giving them a little bit of food before they hit school. So, we'll have to kind of play that by ear. Maybe coffee will be more important in the morning, so I'd be open to be, being open in the morning, and then, but definitely that, that 2:30, 3 o'clock to 8, 9-ish, a little bit later, probably on a Friday or Saturday night, depending on what's going on, if we're having a movie or somebody's playing. But again, you know, we've talked to the community center, because we can only have so many students in the building at a time, that if we were going to do anything of scale, we... That if we were going to do anything of scale, we would go somewhere else.
And summer operation?
Yeah, to be determined. Yeah, I'm not sure, but definitely open. Yeah, I want to be available for them, but, yeah, I would imagine middle day kind of thing.
Thank you.
You bet.
I know a lot of community members have been involved with the planning and that kind of thing. But has there been or will there be community engagement around this to talk a little bit with the neighborhood and that kind of thing?
Absolutely. So the city has told us that in order for us to go through the permitting process, we would need to have a public forum. And so we are planning, you know, if we're lucky enough to move forward, absolutely. And, you know, you can probably tell from today, I have no problem talking about this at length. And so I welcome people coming and having a conversation. And if there are concerns or, yeah, to bring them so that we can talk about it. And I anticipate, you know, to be honest, up until now, it's all been very supportive. And that's why I love this community. But I don't anticipate that always being the case. And so I want to hear from my community and any concerns they have so that we can address them.
All right. Is there any other public comment before? Typically, what we do is we ask questions, we take public comment, then we decide, because we have an action in front of us on whether to say yes or no on this bill. So is there any other public comment? Yes, if you'll come to the microphone, please, Brian?
Okay, my name's Brian Weinstein. I live at 285 Southeast Bush Street in Issaquah. For the last five years, I've been a mentor at Issaquah High School. I've mentored the DECA and the CTE class. And I have heard from students at IHS, there's nothing for them to do. If you're not in sports, if you're not in clubs, if you're not in DECA, if you're not in robotics, like my son is, there is nothing to do in Issaquah. I support the teen center, 100%, but you're in the wrong location. This location isn't going to work. The house is 1,000 square feet. It was built in 1900. You already know, you got to expand it and bring it up to code. So that's a big nut for you to crack. A better location might be somewhere over Rowley Enterprises. You're still on a bus line, you're close to Tibbetts, you're close to the new skate park. Big draw over there, Top Pot Donuts. Everybody loves Top Pot Donuts.
No, but we want them to come to the cafe.
That's okay.
Oh, sorry.
Address the council.
All right, so that's something that probably should be considered. Other locations, working with the school district, they're going to buy the Skylabs property or condemn it. That's right next to Lake Simamish State Park, another fantastic location and venue for kids to go to and enjoy the amenities that are there. Not to be snarky, but Providence Heights is a huge campus. If the school district was interested in repurposing that for some of what the teen cafe could do, that also would be a fantastic use of, and recycling that particular facility. Again, totally supportive, but I think you're going to get some big pushback from the neighborhood. People that I've been talking to are supportive of this, but just not that location. And they want to look for something else, someplace else that isn't going to bring in a lot of traffic. This is right next to the skate park, the old skate park, where we were told there's a bad element there. This teen center is going to be not even 100 yards from that skate park, where supposedly there still exists even today, a quote-unquote "bad element." I don't know what the plans are to do anything about that. So these are some of the concerns that I've heard from the people who live on Bush Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, ma'am, please come to the microphone.
My name is Jenny Bingham. I live at 375 Southeast Andrews Street. And I retired from Issaquah School District after 36 years. I am really excited. And the mission and the vision that all of you have put in is just awesome. And I hear that you've been doing it for a year and a half. But we have, now that we don't have a paper or anything in Issaquah, the citizens here in that area recently found out about it. So that's why you're not going to see many people yet. You may not know about all the traffic that we get from Sunset Way onto our side streets. So we already have a problem with that. Bicyclers can't even get around walkers. And that vicinity right there is very close to all the elementary students, too, that are walking to and from school. I'm not for where it would be placed. I really would love to see a teen center. I was a teen once, and I raised teens here in Issaquah. They both graduated from Issaquah High School. It's just not the place. It's a community. I hate to see it be rezoned. Because once it's rezoned and the city can rezone it, then we've got a problem. Then the city can take that piece of property if you outgrow that teen center and it now is rezoned. Guess what? They can up it, they can extend it. All that property would be rezoned, and it would leak over into our neighborhood, bad. It will just keep encroaching. The city will buy a property, and pretty soon, they'll own Bush and Andrews. And we already have a traffic problem. And Second Avenue is kind of a bypass for the city of Issaquah. I worry about also the students coming and going from that area. It's a nightmare here. I don't know if the teens have taken any time to come and watch the traffic here, especially after 2:30, 3 o'clock. You couldn't even get in or out of that place. And I would really worry about people walking and elementary students and one of these kids coming in their cars, because they're not always going to take public transit. When you say it only takes 30, 40, maybe 50 students inside this home, what are you going to do when there's 60 more that are hanging outside? I mean...
I want to, take your comments. I don't, this is not, I mean, this is not the, there's going to be a process, right, to engage the community. And this is not the decision on changing the use permit or that kind of stuff, right? This is the initial, but it's, you can absolutely address these questions. I think it's important for the city to hear what some of the concerns are. But I don't want to ask the applicant to try to answer these tonight. There's going to be...
Oh, no, I wasn't asking the applicant, no. I just wondered, you know, all those kind of things. So I really am for this. I don't want anybody to think I'm negative about it. But you live in our area. It's historical. You can go to the Historical Society and see all this history down in those four streets. There's two over there and two over here. We already have a problem with the city of Issaquah getting the police to stop the traffic coming down. I worry about the safety of these students, too. And about our quality of life with more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us this evening? Yes, ma'am, if you could come to the microphone. I'm going to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name's Karen Crowe. Do you want to know where I live? Everybody else has stated where they lived, but I just live up on the plateau there. I've lived in this community for 20-plus years and raised, have raised my family here. I have two girls who have graduated from Issaquah High School. I've seen the gamut of the experience of these kids that have gone through middle school and grade school and high school here. And it's run from very high-achieving kids who have done really well to the kids who are kind of outcast and dispersed and disenfranchised from the community because they don't fit the look-good-on-paper ideal. They're still great kids. I've seen, I do a lot of research for child development, because that's what our business does, is we work with kids from 18 months to nine years old. And we do child development work with them. In some of that research, I see in 2016 alone, I think it was, there were more than 6,000 deaths by suicide. It's the second killer to kids between the ages of 10 and 24. Terrifying to me. I have a kid who suffers from depression and anxiety. I think having something like a community center where kids can walk to or can hang out would be such a vital and important part of just their development and the community base. I think to the points of other people who have spoken and dealing with the neighborhood situations, it could be problematic traffic-wise, yes. But I don't think that you're going to get a lot of kids that are walking from other areas quite yet. I think you're going to, it's going to be a slow trickle. And I think those kids that are the bad element may gravitate towards something more healthy. Not one child wants to go down that path of being a bad element. Everybody wants to feel loved and valued and cherished. Not one kid wakes up one day and says, "I'm going to be a heroin addict." But right now, we have the biggest opioid crisis in our community, or actually, in our country, that we've ever seen. So I think that if we have that one place where kids can come and be safe and make better choices and feel valued, it's going to make a huge difference. Maybe this one little house is not the long-term place that they need to be, but it could be a really, really great start. Thank you.
So much. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to make public comment on this issue? Anyone else? Good call. All right, that ends public comment, and let's talk about this. I have some initial thoughts, because fair disclosure, this has been something that I've been really interested in for about six years. And Barb DuMichele and I have been talking about it for a long time. Around the location, I trust, it sounds like there's a public process about the change of use that will occur that will involve the community. So I'm going to not try to parse that this evening. It sounds like there's questions in the community. And I'm confident that the city will engage the community and understand those and try to come back and discuss that with the community. So I'm just going to take that off the table for now and let the city focus on that. In terms of size, you know, I went up to the Boiler Room, which is up in Port Townsend. It's actually a pretty small space, but kids get really creative with the space. And so I'm not as concerned about the size of this venue, particularly because it may not be the long-term home for it. But the Boiler Room just does an amazing job with the space that's probably 400 square feet, not including the kitchen. And they just, you know, teens make the most of it. If they have a space, you know, the same way they get creative with the 100 square feet of their bedroom or the 80 square feet of their bedroom, they'll get very creative with a space that's available to them. The services, again, coming back to the Boiler Room, I know that Jefferson County has a very light-touch engagement with the Boiler Room, where they'll have people come by and make themselves available. And there's pamphlets that they stock up. And just making themselves available in a low-key way has been beneficial up there. The one thing I did hear tonight that I want to be careful about is this comment about whether we have the situation at the skate park. So two of us here were very involved in pushing for the new skate park. And at some point, we should probably have a conversation, because it's my understanding, the reason that we left the old skate park intact is that things have gotten a lot better at the skate park and that some of the problems that we had previously aren't there. But our original plan, I think both you and I had, was to, you know, scrape the old skate park, right? And turn it into something else. And so I just want to make sure that, from a public safety standpoint, that our understanding of where things are at on the skate park is accurate. Because our perception is that it is not the public safety issue that it was before we built the new skate park.
I think that's accurate, although it's still a situation that we monitor. It's also accurate to say that we have not demolished it, even though we have the new one under construction. We have been having conversations with the Parks Board about what that space might be in the future. We have the Parks Strategic Plan underway. We expect ongoing conversations about final disposition of that property. And that will involve community conversation as well.
Okay, well, not tonight, but soon. I would like to get a more formal response on the status of the safety aspect of the old skate park. Because if it needs to be part of the fall budget to dismantle it, I mean, it's in a weird location, and it's hard to sort of monitor it well. And if it needs to be removed, if it needs to be dismantled, then it should be dismantled. But I don't want to put you guys on the spot tonight. But I do want to come back and understand that a little bit better at a future meeting.
Sure, we can provide you with some information about the plans. I will say, it will take some time for us to figure out what that space should be. And until we do, there aren't immediate desires to remove that public asset.
Okay.
Well, I would, just initially, in terms of the teen cafe, I think that this is a wonderful idea and a very needed, something that we very much need in our city. I, too, have raised two kids here that have gone through Issaquah High and just one that just graduated. And all I hear from them and their friends are, there's just nowhere to go and there's nothing, you know, nothing to do when you're a teenager. And also, just after years of doing community outreach and volunteer work with the PTSA and other nonprofits, I think that our teenagers are just this very, very important group. They are just about to launch into life. And there can be all sorts of things that come up in terms of pressure and anxiety and angst and that, you know, kind of our high-performance community and that kind of thing, where they really need a place to go, a place to relax. So from the teen cafe perspective, I just am very supportive of that element. I did ask about community engagement because of the location. And thank you for addressing that in terms of saying that that really is another element to this that we will be talking about. But I would also say, in terms of the location, that we do have that right by the community center. So there are lots of teens that are, and middle schoolers and that kind of thing, that are used to going to the community center from school, directly from school. And I would just say that when I asked about best practices and you talked about something that they really focus on and that particular hire, I would just say that my kids spend a fair amount of time going after school. This was when they were in middle school. But they would go to the community center. And I would always hear about the staff. I even knew, I knew the names of the people who were there. And it wasn't anything formal. The kids were just going and playing basketball or that kind of thing. But, you know, they would come back and they'd be like, "We love..." It was Katie. Katie.
Katie, who's now running the seniors.
Exactly. So everybody loves Katie. But I remember all the way back when my kids were in middle school, them coming home and saying that. And for me to actually know that name. And there were other people there as well, but it makes a big difference. And just having that place to go, it's important in this community. So it's something I, I love the idea of this. I think there's more work to do in terms of location, community engagement, and maybe talking more about some of the comments that, to focus on answering maybe some of those questions that might be coming up about what if there is overflow and parking and supervision and that kind of thing, I think is super important.
Thanks. Eileen?
Just briefly, I think there's still, I mean, I'm all for this. And I think it's going to be a fabulous opportunity for these youth. I grew up in a community that had a teen center for us, and it was a great place to go after school. Lots of, you know, because I had a working family. And so that gave me an opportunity of someplace to go and got my homework done most of the time. Sometimes not. And I'm all for this. And I'm sure there's going to be bumps and other questions and other things I wouldn't have to answer, but I'm in favor of it.
All right. So it sounds like we are, my screen just locked up on me. So we're in favor of bringing this back. The recommendation from the administration is coming back to September 5th to the full council. And so we're recommending the three in favor? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Thank you, all the speakers who came before us, both the kids and the community members. And look forward to hearing how the result of the conversations on the change of use. on the, the change of use goes. Good luck. All right, and with that, we're gonna move on to our second and final item for this evening, Agenda Bill 7456, additional 2017 staffing request. That's got a sort of verbal walk-on from council last night at 11 o'clock at night.
Great, thank you very much. I am gonna quickly turn this one over as well to our staff that's here to make brief presentations on these positions in terms of need and, and what they are, describe those positions. So there are two that were originally recommended in the 2017 budget, they were deliberated during that time. One was a new title, new position, that's the Public Records Analyst, and the second was a classification that had been approved in 2016, but it wasn't until 2017's budget that we began to contemplate filling that position and, and then ultimately remove the funding for 2017. And, and that followed one attempt at trying to fill the position and where we were unsuccessful. So I'll talk about that one first, that's the Intergovernmental Relations Manager. That position, we are proposing to modify the job description slightly based on the input that we received at the council and senior leadership retreat in June. What we heard during that retreat was, there was a desire on the part of council members for a few things, and these are items that are not called out specifically, I think, in the Agenda Bill, so I wanted to mention them. Some council members expressed a desire to have another point of contact for kind of off-hours questions, so as you're reviewing packets or getting ready for regional meetings over the weekend or in the evening hours, having someone to turn to to pose those questions. This individual might also help with express need to help disseminate information out to council members after you attend those regional meetings or after our council leadership meetings. Do some research, legwork on potential agenda bills that council members might want to bring forward. This, this need was stated clearly, I think, in the Agenda Bill, but had a lot of support from council members, and that's support for your involvement on regional committees. So SCA is an example of that. We have a lot of regional transportation partnerships that we work on, and so this individual would help support council members' efforts on behalf of the city, but also review agendas, become subject matter expert, and help develop and implement the City of Issaquah's strategy and advocacy in that regional environment. Another thing that we heard at the retreat was just a desire across the board for more help with policy analysis, whether that's local originated policy questions or ones that are being entertained on the regional level. From my perspective, in addition to what we've stated in the Agenda Bill, there are a couple other things that I wanted to mention. I expect the Intergovernmental Relations position to help us achieve a better presence regionally, which will help when we go to apply for grants or make our pitch after we have applied for grants. This individual would also help us to leverage policy changes that could be beneficial for our community, by being present more often than current staff is able to do sometimes. And we have a city lobbyist that works for us at the state legislature, but also helps us with departments of the state of Washington and other regional advocacy needs, policy needs, and the IGR position would help us to better leverage our lobbyist's time as well. So that is what we envision with Intergovernmental Relations Manager, in addition to the, the classic duties that I think were described when you first approved the position in 2016. So the other repeat ask would be from the Clerk's Office, and so Tina, would you like to describe that position?
Sure. You've heard about this position previously and also at retreat. The Public Records Analyst position would be a citywide position that would help us with our increased level of records requests. For example, you know, when I first came into the city, I was handling maybe 20 records requests a year. Some of those initial years were maybe six total, and they tended to be sort of investigative or big picture now, so fast forward to today, and, you know, we're hitting the 300 mark, and they're not minor, and they tend to be more any and all, and tend to encompass all sorts of records that sit within our agency. So there's a need there. The Washington State Records laws have changed, so now we've got a bunch of compliance issues that metrics are good. This one brings us to a whole new level, so we need to wrap our minds around what that is and what that looks like. So we're starting to have conversations with lead agencies, MRC and AWC, and we're talking about what that will look like. There's a committee at the, it's called L-LARC or J-LARC, will be providing some guidance on what those performance measures will look like. So they've asked us to hold off just a little bit. We're hoping that if this position is funded, that those two pieces come together at the same time, so we're looking at the fall with that. And then right now, what we're doing is trying to think about how we start shifting the work that we're doing so we can start meeting the metrics as they come in, and how we can upgrade our tools that we have and start managing and doing system administration better within, with the systems that we have.
Now, wasn't the, the reforms that went through Olympia, while there was some, while there was some reporting to it, they were intended to try to reduce the number of nuisance requests, right? So will it, is there, is there a projection that it will actually, you'll have a smaller number of, of requests than 300?
I don't think so. I think for us as an agency, we deal with maybe five, sort of four business companies throughout the year that ask for extensive information. The bill says we still need to treat that as a records request, but now you have the means to say, "This is more extensive," or "We have to do reporting into our system, so now we can charge you at a certain rate," or "We can enter into a contract with you and say, 'Do you agree to pay this amount?'" So we've got some leverage there.
You said that's like five of 300?
Five out of the 300.
Got it, okay.
And then I think what it was trying to do was eliminate, like, one person coming in, as we saw last year or the year before, and asking for every single record that the agency had.
Right, so they could go build a business online and...
Right, or just consume your time. The other element that, that was helpful was the bot request, so if someone built a program or a computer decided, you know, spit out all these records requests, we could, they're received within a certain cycle and through certain specifications, then you could ignore it, basically. The, the biggest component, sort of with my 200 to 300 records requests that we have currently, is that you can still ask for clarification, yet if the requester doesn't want to provide it, you still have to work towards the records request.
Saying that's a frustration that didn't get resolved with this...
Didn't reach far enough.
Gotcha. Okay? And this, this amount that, oh, sorry, so I'll let you guys keep going, because there's more beyond that, too, right? These are, those are the first two.
Correct, and the DSD has two others.
Right.
Yeah, sorry. I was looking at the page. We do have two new requests from Development Services Department, so Keith will come talk about those two positions. One is a construction inspector, and the second is a plans examiner. Then I can touch on the budget after that.
Good evening. So there's, you know, so I want to start this conversation by kind of going through a little bit of a recap. You know, we just talked about Development Services and fees not that long ago. There was a lot of conversation about the department working like a business, you know, which means there needs to be some correspondence between revenues and operating costs, and so I want to start you with that mindset to say, "Hey, okay, yeah, we just had these conversations, we just changed our fees," and, you know, so if you go through this kind of chronology, really the last two years, 15 and 16, the department was in the red fairly significantly, and that was kind of the genesis of updating the fees in 2017. As we went through deliberations, I kind of left it at at least 85%, because we at least had one council member who, whose perspective was that we should be at 100% cost recovery, so I didn't want to lose track of that, because he would not appreciate that. So, so here we are, position number one is a new plans examiner. And so where I want to start with is revenue. And if you look at the first six-month revenue summary from finance, here's building permits on the bottom line. If you could see, what we budgeted for this year was $1.1 million. After six months, our revenue is 1.4. So we're at 128% over 12-month projection.
So you thought, oh, sorry, so it was 1.1 not, was not the budget to, year to, it was not the budget through July, you were expecting through December to bring in 1.14?
Yes.
And you've already brought in 1.45?
Yes.
And it's August.
Yes, I'm going to Tahiti next week.
So Keith, before, before you go on, and also because I did not have a chance to review this presentation...
It's not that good.
Yes. Thank you for putting it together. I just want to mention, you know that this year, developing our revenue estimates in particular was extremely difficult, given that the moratorium went into place right during budget development time, so it really was a bit of guesswork for us to figure out what the, I'll say, short-term impact is for 2017 and, and the lagging impact, longer-term impact, going into 2018 or even 2019, so...
I was gonna unpack some of those details.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, so, so I'm just setting the stage, right? Building momentum. So here's, this is a, a graph of our building plan review staff and how many review lines they have. So, so we start over here on 2008, I don't even know if you can see that, if you can, my apologies. Far left is 2008, far right is 2016. What you see there in the orange bar and the gray bar, the gray bars are our plan reviewer now, that's Lon Kirsey, and that's how many review lines. So you can see his workload has dramatically increased since the end of the recession. What's also troubling for me as a department director is the orange line, is actually our building official, and so we have our building official doing plan review, which is not really what our building officials should be doing. So there's two kind of problems, as this graph shows for me as the department director, and that is, one, there's too much work going through one person's set of hands, and two, I've got somebody doing work that they shouldn't be doing. So what are the benefits of adding another plans examiner?
I'm sorry, back a step.
Oh, this is the close. I'm just kidding. Back a step.
So what I don't get...
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I don't get is your Y-axis. It's number of review lines assigned by position.
So what...
How do I translate that to FTE equivalent?
So you, so I, I don't know that you can exactly. So what that, what that means is that that person, if you look at all the permits that have come through, unfortunately, it doesn't equal a permit. So a, a line of review doesn't equal a permit, because a plans examiner may actually review something, say, three or four times before it goes out. So there's a rough correlation between the number of lines and the number of permits, but you can't say a certain FTE should be able to review X number of permits a year, because there's a big difference between a DEC permit and a 600,000-square-foot Costco new office building, right?
How do I know how bad of a problem you have? Because, you know, what, this doesn't, this doesn't tell me, this could be, everybody's got tons of free time, or this could be that everybody's totally overloaded, and I don't have any way to, to gauge that from this.
From this diagram only, you're correct. But what I can tell you is, what this is showing is that we are completely underwater. Right now, the current practice, and this is what you heard at the, at the retreat, is we cannot do any in-house plan review, because we don't have staff resources to do that. That means every permit, big and small, has to go through an expedited consultant review, or else it sits for at least three months before somebody can touch it. So, so you're right, there's not enough information on this particular graph, because I haven't correlated it to, you know, what is a, you know, what's an average number of touches per staff, and how long does each review take, and averaging that out to get some normal kind of, but what should you be able to do in a year? Doesn't really work that way. But I could try and do that, I could talk to my people and see if we can figure something out.
If I do project management, I do it in FTE equivalents, right?
Right.
And so you, you break out the work that you've got, and you sum up all the FTEs, and you get how much, you know, how much work there is to do, and if I have eight FTEs worth of work to do this month and only four FTEs, then I know I'm incredibly underwater.
Right. So I know I'm incredibly underwater.
And I believe you're incredibly underwater. I'm just saying, this, this chart doesn't help me get to that conclusion.
I, I do, I understand.
It looks like modern art from like the 1960s. The color scheme is very 1960s, and something that I would see in a building, you know, an art installation, not helping me with your story, but I do believe you.
Okay, so, so at some point, so let me get to the benefits of adding this position, and then if you feel like I need to get that metric for you, to, to sell you on adding this position, let me know.
No, I think you need to get that to sell the full council when this comes back to the full council. I think you should have something that talks about the level of work that's out there in terms of, I don't know if it's FTEs, but it's something that looks different than that chart.
Okay.
Right? It's something that just talks about how much work there is out there versus how many people you have, right? That's all. I don't know exactly how you do that, but I think that that would be helpful for people.
I don't know that that's possible, but I, I will work on that and see what we can put together for the council. So the benefits of the new plans examiner is, one, it provides relief for the sole existing plans examiner. So he goes on vacation, and guess what happens to permits? Nothing. Yes, that is the, that's the correct answer. It allows the city to process more building permits in-house, including smaller permit applications, because we do none now. It provides, yeah, one and three look about the same. Sorry. It allows the building official more time to manage the building division, which I talked about earlier. And actually, the staffing levels prior to the reorganization in 2012, we actually had two plans examiners and a building official, and what happened when John Minato was promoted to DSD Director, he promoted one of his plans examiners to building official, that would be Tom Reitner, and that other plans examiner position just got lost. So part of this is actually suggesting we return to the level of staffing we had in 2012. All right, that's the end of this first one. Second one.
I'm...
I'm sorry, yes.
I do want to ask questions now? I do want to ask some questions. So building permits in-house, are, are we not doing any building permits in-house?
So the, so when, when, when applicants come to the counter and ask about permitting, they are basically told, "If you want to get your permit reviewed, you need to go expedited review." That's what's being told right now because of lack, because, again, back to this graph that means nothing. So this is, so...
You didn't say that.
I'm kidding. So I've been in this room too long for the last two days. So this, this graph right now, what this is showing is this person here basically is, he has already like eight pages of permits in his queue that he needs to get to. is, he has already like eight pages of permits in his queue that he needs to get to, and he would be the one that would be doing the in-house plan review. So, part of it is, you can get in that line if you want to, but most people, as you know, who are looking for permits, don't want to get in the line, so they're going to pay to do the expedited review because that's a consultant.
Who's doing that work?
So, right now, we have three consultants that are working for the city. So, one's Doug Beck, one's Crystal Colkey, and the third is, I can remember him as Hank Williams, but it's not Hank Williams. It's somebody Williams.
Who we are paying.
To do this work for us.
Do this work for us.
As consultants, yes.
As a consultant. So, we have three consultants doing the work for the, okay.
Yes.
But they're not working full-time, are they?
They're not, they're, no, they're, so, so like, for example, Doug Beck, he's a plans examiner for the city of Bellevue. He does this as his moonlighting job. Crystal Colkey has her own business, and she does this work for multiple eastside jurisdictions. Hank Williams does it when he's not making music.
So, that people don't get confused, you're not saying you're going to try to do the work of three full-time contractors with this one you hire. It adds up to.
So, we would.
Something close to an FTE.
So, we would, what we would do is, we would, one, I think lighten the existing workload of Lon, who's currently over, he's underwater. But the second thing that it would allow us to do is to process some permits in-house. We would still have the expedited and the consultant review as an option, but it wouldn't be the only option that applicants would have as they do right now. Okay? Okay, so are we, Eileen, did I answer your question?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. So, construction inspector, so this is the other ask. So, numbers are a little less defined here, but in our current annual budget for land use and site work, we have 1.448 million dollars. January through June, right now, we're running 856,931 for revenue. So, that's 59 percent of the annual budget or 132,000 and a half over half-year's budget. So, again, back to, do we have the revenue to justify another position? I think we do. This one is, you know, right now, we have two construction inspectors in the city, and when they are doing waterline work, they are having to be at that job site during that entire work to make sure that the contractors aren't doing something that might compromise the city's purity. So, if we've got somebody doing like a waterline extension, I've got one of my staff there all day, and then that leaves one person for the whole rest of the city. But right now, we have 40 active construction sites, basically kind of on an ongoing basis, and that's just, it's not enough resources. So, you know, what they look at is, they look at grading and what utilities, streets, sidewalks, temporary erosion and sedimentation control, traffic control, tree and critical area protection, and then, as I mentioned earlier, any potable water work requires onsite inspectors to be there. So, this is, plus, just the engagement with the community has risen. So, we talk about kind of our levels of service and what we're wanting to fund to. So, you know, it's, it's difficult when the expectation is, if you have a contractor who's tracking dirt out onto a street, that there's a city inspector there to kind of get it policed and cleaned up almost immediately. You know, if I've only got two people running between 40 sites, they don't even get to some sites on a given day or maybe two. So, this is, this is, again, it's a sheer level of service, and I think we're not meeting expectations because we don't have the resources.
Keith?
Yes?
So, from what I'm, I'm looking at here and what you're asking for, you can, you can do that for 126K?
I can do an F, I can do that for that, yes. I can do an FTE at an inspector level.
Okay, so, but is it going to cover everything?
So, the amount that's shown in the AB is for the remainder of the fiscal year. So, it's portions of each of these positions' salaries. It's not 12 months. So, we'd have to incorporate it into the 2018 budget.
Annualized, it's a lot more.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't read the AB. Any other questions? That's my spiel.
Thanks, Keith. I have a question for Emily. So, is this, is this four full-time FTEs when all is said and done between the four positions, public records analysts, intergovernmental relations manager, plans examiner, construction inspector?
Yes.
Is this four FTEs, 4.0? And, okay. Questions?
I'm still having trouble with that dollar amount and four FTEs. Can we honestly get these four staff for this dollar amount?
It's only for, if we, if, on September 5th, if council took action and said, go ahead, post those positions, by the time we fill them, we'd probably have a month of salary and benefits that we would be paying for each of those four positions. So, yes, it should be enough for 2017. And then, knowing that council had approved those positions, we would incorporate the full 12-month salary and benefits and other costs into the 2018 budget.
And any idea what that's in 12 months?
You, you should know position by position. I don't know the grand total.
We'll have a better idea in about a week. The numbers that we had put together previous and I believe the new ones that are, that are being calculated, HR is working with us, and so they have just a little bit more work to do. And they said that they'd get back to us and let us know if our numbers were, you know, out of alignment as they did their review.
Sure. And so that's the case with a, a new position with a new title. We have to go out and do some comps on market, and so that work is still underway. Keith, you, you have these two titles already in place. Do you have an estimate for?
200K.
200K.
Annualized?
Yeah. So, it's like 120 for the plans examiner and then, sorry, Wes, and then like 80 for the inspector.
Got it.
So, we can probably take this times four.
And I think for the IGR, it's roughly 160 or 70K if I recollect.
Question? I'd like to see those estimates.
Absolutely. We'll be sure to have them.
Incorporated, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And it sounds like we'll, we'll have clarity on the public records position by the time it comes back to full council.
I have a question about the IGR. Is this a position that other cities our size have?
Yes.
Kirkland, Redmond.
Many, many do, not all. Certainly is true for cities slightly larger and much larger, but yes, it's not uncommon for cities our size, correct?
Kirkland and Redmond do have.
I would have to look that up to be certain of it. As I said, the position was authorized in 2016, so it's a matter in our mind now of timing on the funding to fill the position.
I, I understand. I just think that.
Sure, we can.
You know, it's a bunch of money, and I just want to make sure if somebody has a question, that this is, you know, comparable for, you know.
Sure.
For other cities of our size, this is something that, you know, this isn't something we're trying to do that only, you know, if you look around and you say, well, you know, what cities in King County have it? Oh, Seattle and Bellevue and Issaquah, right? You, that would be, that would be a harder conversation to have with the community.
Sure, we can provide that list of community comps again.
That would be great for our fellow council members. All right, question?
I would also ask, on the IGR, how, how does it impact other positions? Both other FTE positions that are currently there? Are there, you know, things that this role would be taking on that would be taken off someone else's plate? Also, how does that impact the lobbyist?
Sure.
And how much the lobbyist is being used or not used or some information about that?
Multiparts to that question, so remind me if I miss a piece. I, I think as we talked about at the retreat, there are many positions in our organization, particularly department directors, that engage in that same sort of work. We go to regional meetings, we work with the lobbyists to produce documentation that he needs in order to advocate on our behalf. We do the policy analysis, we support the council members at, at meetings when needed or participate on the staff technical equivalent of the elected bodies, and then have to make sure we share information across those lines. I, to some degree, there's, there's an insatiable amount of work in that arena. And so for us, we have had to pick and choose where we engage and to what degree. And there are plenty of times when we cannot afford the time to send someone to regional meetings or participate on a particular committee, or we have to rely on other communities to represent our interests. And so we'll do a little work to make sure that they understand our voice. So, there would be pieces where the intergovernmental relations person could act on our behalf where we are not there. And there certainly would be times when we would ask that individual to, for example, Sheldon, if Sheldon couldn't make that month's transportation meeting for somebody, he might tap the IGR to attend in his place. So, I think there's some pieces that could come off of other individuals' plates, but I also think that we, as a city, have chosen to elevate our position in the region and be more active, and this would help us fulfill that objective. And then you asked about the lobbyists. Right now, we have no single individual that is coordinating the lobbyists' work. And so when Doug needs something from us, he will ping four of us because he needs it right away typically. And so it's up to, you know, that group of four to decide who can get back to him quickly with the information that he needs. If he had a point of contact who's had this as a primary responsibility, we would be more responsive and, because there are times when Doug doesn't get an answer and just has to go with what he knows. But, but having the best possible information will make Doug more successful. Also, there are lots of opportunities when Doug has asked us to come in and testify in Olympia or meet with one of the departments of the state and try to provide them with background on a particular issue. And to have one person that is well-known throughout the state on the staff side would be advantageous for the city as well. So, it will definitely help us to leverage Doug's efforts.
Other questions before we open to public comment? Public comment, anyone?
Okay, Connie Marsh came down when I saw this happening. So, from the public records side, I ask for public records sometimes, and the reason I ask for public records is because, eh, when we switched our websites, most of the information disappeared from the ability for public to research their own. So, if I was to choose, I would choose to repopulate the publicly available information so that some of the, some of the things are actually viable and easy to get without having to, to ping Tina because we just can't now, they don't exist. And that's just basically anything prior to 2012, I have to ask Tina. And to me, that seems like a dreadful waste of time because I'm endlessly going to have to ask Tina for things prior to 2012, and they're just sitting in another file somewhere, it's just we can't access it. So, I don't, I, I want to create something that's long-term and helpful throughout time, not just another person to process. The government relations person made me, made me grumpy, as I recall, at Budget and still does when I hear it. There is no way that a government relations person is going to have the depth of knowledge of staff for probably four years. And when someone pings him with a question, he is also going to ping all the other pertinent people. So, the return on investment for 140,000 to 60,000 dollar a year job does not seem viable at this point in time to me. Redmond, Kirkland, they're quite a bit bigger. I would, I would rather see us get through our strategic planning so that then we actually have a community voice that's consistent and we aren't just going sort of for the one-off opportunities where we could be sure that when we were paying this person to speak, we were speaking with a holistic voice that, that we knew the whole city was aiming in the direction together. And right now, we aren't. We are still fragmented and going here or there, oh, let's do this one because we have an opportunity. So, maybe next year, maybe the year after, but now is not the time for that position. Much as I know that some people in upper-level administration are run off their feet and need help, I don't think this is the way to help them. I would be interested to understand exactly how to help that. Now, the, the more people on-the-ground working example that Keith provides is far easier for me to support because we simply don't have enough people to do that work at this point in time, and we haven't for quite some time. And so to me, that is a more urgent situation than the other two because buildings are being built with only two inspectors in town, and they have to have days off sometimes, and that is a dangerous situation. And so that, to me, is an emergency. And the, I'm going to reiterate, the upper-level administration, somewhat of a luxury, and I would take a different pathway on the records. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment, and as we have exhausted the number of citizens not affiliated with the administration in the room, I'm pretty sure that that ends public comment, but thank you, Connie. Liberations? Did you have questions?
Tola, and I failed to stop before we went into public comment. There were a couple other positions that we were going to talk about per last night's council meeting, so I'll bring those up. These are not.
They're not on the bill.
Correct, they're not in the agenda bill.
Okay.
Those two positions are related to the Transportation Advisory Board, and they're found in that bill. But council last night asked if we would talk about those positions here. The first is a senior transportation planner, and this, and that would be full-time, and then the second would be an increment of an FTE, a point two, or some administrative support, so administrative assistant-type position. Both of those would provide direct service to the board, which has now been established, and also certainly do, do work that results from that board's work plan. So, an example that I have given is, we can envision that the Transportation Advisory Board will be busy in the first year with a mobility master plan. That creates a lot of work for someone to do. I'm sure we would have some consulting expertise, but we would need project management, certainly someone that would understand our own codes and vision and help involve community in that planning effort. So, that's just one example. Also, senior transportation planner is not a, a position that we have right now and would be very helpful for us to have as we have transportation responsibilities in a variety of departments and would help to ensure that we have the collaboration across those departments. And also, traffic and transportation issues is our, our number-one issue in this community, and we still have a lot of work to do to try to develop the policies, the projects, advocacy, everything in the transportation universe to improve our situation in our community. So, we envision that individual playing a significant role in those efforts as well.
Yes, Eileen?
So, the senior transportation planner is a position that is just not filled at this moment, or we've never had this position?
We do not have that position. We don't have a planner, per se, so someone that would be more involved with the, the more conceptual and vision piece. We have engineers, for example, that work. We have engineers, for example, that work on transportation, but we don't have kind of the planner position right now. And as part of the discussion on the Transportation Advisory Board, particularly with the Council Infrastructure Committee, I had done research on other cities that have similar advisory boards and found that they had transportation planners that were usually tasked as the liaison. And those individuals found that they were spending anywhere between 20% and 40% of their time on just the board's agenda and supported the board.
So who's doing this work for us now?
Well, we don't have a board, so it's a variety of individuals as we support council in doing that work, or Development Commission or Planning Commission. Correct, it falls to either our DSD planners or PWE traffic engineers.
I'm not sure I understood that. So my question was, who's doing the senior transportation planning now for us? I'm sorry if I-
So we don't have that position. The tasks that are being done by a senior transportation planner position of the future that are being done right now are being done by our engineers and by our other planners that really deal with more the land use and land development and not necessarily transportation system kind of planning. And then again, we don't have a Transportation Advisory Board, so if that's a chunk of this future position, we don't have anybody doing that now.
Did that answer?
That answered my question.
Ryan, any questions?
No, not right now.
I will open it once again to public comment. Twice, twice on the same-
Now serving number two?
Yes. Sort of hard without anything in advance, so you know, this is off the top of the head. Confusion because I don't know who this position would be working under. I miss, or is it equal to, right? So is this a subordinate position to say Kurt? Or is it a equal position to Kurt? And how does this position, who is a transportation planner, interface with the planning engineer that does transportation, right? Because it sounds like they're doing the same job without any intentional interface because this board is not going to be dealing with construction, transportation, right? Development, transportation, right? So to me, that leaves us, to some extent, in the same sort of awkward position that we're in now where we have a planning side of roads going through in an entirely different process than our roads overarching system, if that makes sense. Development, different than the rest of the city somehow. And this doesn't solve that problem, which I think is a core problem that the community has at the moment. So I would, I'd like to see somehow in the job description of the transportation planner that there be a direct responsibility for interfacing with, or that might not be the answer, that is just an idea for solving the problem, right? Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so deliberation. Ryan, have your eyebrow furrowed? No, yes?
Well, there's a lot to think about when we have this many positions in an agenda bill.
Or at least talking about, there's four in the agenda bill and there's 1.2 is a heads-up-
1.2 heads-up, yeah.
Emily?
Yes.
Just to be clear, last night, council asked us to talk about those last two positions. There wasn't a clear expectation of when we would return with a recommendation on those positions. So I wanted to be clear about the options for those two. As I see them, they're either, as one or more council members suggested, that we incorporate into this agenda bill and have a recommendation out of this committee now on those positions. That's an option. A second option is to consider those positions via a separate agenda bill, but to still bring it sooner rather than later back to the council with the intent that it would be approved before the 2018 budget and therefore allow us to get started on recruitment and selection of the board. Because as I stated last night, we want to make sure that these positions are filled so that the board will have the support resources it needs to be successful. And then the third would be to consider these positions with the 2018 budget. And all that that would do would delay when we can recruit and select members for that board, but that's all right. When we have stood up new boards, we have done so at whatever point in time we needed to do that. So there's not an obligation that we recruit, for example, in January when we begin the recruitment for the rest of the city's boards. So those are the three basic options that I see.
Okay. Well, in regard to the additional information about the transportation planner and the administrative support, I would say that I would need more time and probably have more questions.
Yeah, I would be, I would be not comfortable unless somebody's got an amendment in hand to Agenda Bill 7456. I would not be okay moving forward with a verbal amendment to 7456 today unless you two felt really strongly in.
No, I feel-
Yeah. So it's good to understand this, and I think it helps us understand that we're talking about overall next year, potentially 5.2 new FTEs. It's good to understand that there's these 1.2 out there. But yeah, tonight, I certainly hope we're only looking at 7456 as it is. Last night's information was just too new to properly vet.
Sure, and I'll offer that we've, as we were working with the Council Infrastructure Committee, we had to develop a job description so that we knew what that person might be tasked with. We did have to play out some of these questions that have been raised about supervision and in the hierarchy and how that looks. And I'll be frank, we still have some work to do since it is a new position and we have our transportation responsibilities in a variety of departments. But we have had to think about how does this person maybe interface with engineers on the on-the-ground, project-based sort of aspect of the job and then more broadly with planners as they're looking at land use applications or a long-range planning group. So we have a job description, and whenever council wishes to see that and have those positions brought forward, whether it's prior to the 2018 budget deliberations or during, we will be ready.
Thoughts?
Would you like me to just continue through, or do we want to talk about them one at a time?
Why don't you, let's start with what you think we should do today, right? We've got a proposal in front of us, which is to say yes to four of these things and to bring that back to full councils on September 5th. So first of all, is that what you want to discuss? Is that, as the first step, is that what you want to do here today?
Well, sure, maybe, maybe we could talk a little bit more about, and so Emily, you were, you were talking a little bit about the, you know, the purpose to bring this forward now. We could wait and do this during budgeting, but this would allow everyone to start recruiting and getting the positions in place. And that applies to all of the positions that we're talking about in the agenda bill. Well, I guess I would say that that makes sense, but I think we should talk about each individual position.
Okay. So, well, your thoughts?
Well, definitely the two walk-ons are sort of off the plate for me. And we would only be, probably putting a little bit more discussion in regards to the other four positions that we have. Eliminating at this moment in time, these two walk-ons.
I mean, I would like to go further. I feel like, I'm super concerned that there's 5.2 new FTEs being considered overall because throughout the course of the year, we have seen more and more things dipping into general fund. And I have concerns that, I would like to see this more broadly within the context of the annual budget and what we're looking at overall for 2018. Do we feel that these will be sustainable? Two of these definitely seem like, there's a strong argument, the sustainability, which is the Plans Examiner and the Construction Inspector. But the others, I would sort of, I'd like to see those come back as part of the 2018 budget discussions because I feel like I just don't know, you know, we had a, right when I joined council, we had, you know, the really unpleasant task of having to do reductions in the city. And so I just want to be very careful when we add staff to the city. And so, you know, those two clearly are sort of emergencies. Like, we have a normal process for this, right? Which is the budget. And at the budget, the city comes forward with a bunch of new positions. And we're now looking at a mid-year bunch of new positions.
And you're saying yes to the Construction Inspector and the Plans Examiner?
Yes, because there's a sort of, it's been presented as that it's kind of a crisis. It doesn't seem necessarily that the others rise to the level of crisis.
Public Records Analyst?
I mean, if it was part of the normal 2018 budget process and we approved it as part of 2018 budget-
I think we'd lose some ground, some leverage with new state laws and the records that we have currently, but if we needed to push it, then we certainly would.
Lose the leverage, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
Well, we have a reporting requirement now that started July 23rd. And so as of now, we need to be reporting on the new records requested are coming in. And we're struggling with trying to figure out how to do that and how to track it. So just that component alone is difficult to do. So the sooner we can get someone on board to-
This has always been a position that needs additional help, it seems.
Yeah, there is a risk to our organization. And the fees are heavy and high, and they hit the general fund when they occur. So if we feel that there's a need and a resource now that can be added to it, I think it would be very helpful.
Well, I see moving forward with three of them.
Okay.
Construction Inspector, the Plans Examiner, and the Records Analyst.
I could, I could support that.
So I would, I would, I really want to echo, I really like to look at everything together during a budgeting process. And so having these come sort of midway through the year is tough. I think that the construction inspection and the building permit review positions, that that's obviously impacting what's happening in the city and impacting residents as they're coming forward. And so I think recruiting now and getting that done now is important. I'm a little bit up in the air on the Records Analyst. As I sit and listen to everything that's kind of happened, I mean, things have obviously changed based on when public records, you know, the scenario that you were talking about, things have changed. And they've, the requests have grown, and even though we've all heard about, you know, some of these changes in laws, it doesn't seem like it's having an impact. I would, I was wondering, is there, if we wanted to wait until the budgeting session, would there be a way to approve a contractor to come in until we, until we get to budgeting and can look at that again? I just thought I'd throw it out there.
I think what professional service line items may need to be utilized potentially, or would be more attorney time, possibly.
It may not be something that a contractor could-
Correct.
So by the time you, you know, went out for this particular position, brought them in, trained them, what, how long is that going to take before they're actually, for the, a Records Analyst actually on the job and working?
Well, we would hope that, depending on the timing of council's approval, if it's approved in September, then we would hope that by the end of October, we'd have someone that was selected for hire and could start in November.
We're talking about two months into this?
I think I would go ahead and just support the Records Analyst, that the changes have happened, that the work is there. And, you know, while there might be some other options to look at how that's all being managed, that could be something that could be done by this person as well. So support that.
Right.
I would still like to see the Records Analyst in there this year. By the time, I mean, if it's going to take basically four months to get them up and running, that means that we're not going to see them being efficient until like April of next year.
I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to do what I heard from Tina, and, you know, it's, this is not a department that has been rapaciously growing over time. And if they need somebody now, then I, if they need somebody now. So it sounds like, what the three of us are saying is, one of our alternates here has authorized only some of the positions at this time. It sounds like what we want to do is we want to authorize three of the four positions at this time, which is the Public Records Analyst, the Plans Examiner, and the Construction Inspector. Is that correct?
And I, we didn't really get a chance to talk about the intergovernmental relations position, or I hadn't commented on it yet. And I still think that that's really important. And I like what we've talked about and what we've built out, but because that doesn't seem as much of a crisis point and it would be something that we could take a look at during the budgeting session with the overall picture of anything else that might be coming up, because now we've got an additional position that we need to talk about as well, or 1.2 FTE, I think it would be prudent to wait.
I think it was, if it was the only mid-year hit to the general fund and we had had a pretty clean year otherwise, and it was like, well, we got this one and we have some urgency to it, then I could maybe see it more. But because we've gone to the well a whole bunch of times and because we're looking for even more hires, we're going to, the three of us are recommending three to go through, there's another 2.2 beyond that. You know, that's why I want to be, that's why I want to be more cautious and measure twice and cut once, or measure twice and cut twice, once for the three and then once for the other 2.2. So it sounds like we're in agreement. So we do want to come back as per the recommendation, September 5th, but with those three positions stated. Well, it says full council.
Consent at full council?
We're happy to go with staff recommendation of full council. No, I think we want to talk about it. I think we want to make clear, oh, okay, it's late, I did not, humor, it is a difficult concept.
We can put it on consent, but it'll be pulled out.
There we go, there we go. All right, so any helpful counsel? And with that, that concludes the meeting. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, viewers at home, and have a good evening and drive safely.